All right, it is now seven o'clock on Thursday, June 11th. We will call the meeting to order July. Thank you very much. Kirk's first action as a new commissioner is to correct me on the month. Thank you. We welcome Kirk Huffer, our newest commissioner. So he's sworn in. We did that via I've signed the paperwork and what's her name? Thank you, sir. Sheila Kreider swore him in down at the county. Found out we're doing it in an okay way, but the best way per the county to do it is to have the chair of the board sign the paperwork certifying that he is, he or she, whoever is the new commissioner, is that a commissioner, and then they're sworn in at the county, not here. We could do it the way we were doing it, but Sheila said that's probably not the best way, so another learning lesson. And so we did this one the better way. And so that was taken care of yesterday. So Kirk's been official for 24 hours. Agenda changes is the first thing on the minutes are the agenda for this evening. Agenda changes by anybody?
Somebody sent the auditor's report, so is that true?
No, the auditor's official report is not on.
Okay, so we can't put it on the agenda?
No, sir, we cannot.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to have Curtis and Megan from Running Club report when they arrive, just to see them sometime so they can present that.
So move.
Be flexible probably after public comment. I'll let him know there probably be.
Yeah, we don't want to interrupt public comment, but.
Okay. I would actually like to talk about public comments.
Sir?
I was looking back at the February minutes. I'm looking at confusion on it. I'd like to bring it up at some point. You just tell me when.
Now's a good time.
I looked at the February minutes and Commissioner McDougall made a motion to add public comment maximum of 30 minutes in board issues and minutes approval to be followed by another public comment time at the end of the meeting. I seconded it. Clark expressed concern for the time limit and passed unanimously. I would like to make a motion to clarify one thing. Because when we talked about the time limit at the beginning, we also had discussed a time limit at the end of the meeting. And that time at the end of the meeting was not for people to speak twice. That time at the end of the meeting was for people that were on the list, the sign-in sheet, that didn't get the time because that time had expired, that 30 minutes. And I think that we also had added in there at some point to where we as a board could vote to extend it if we wanted, but that's not what the motion was. So I would like to make a motion tonight, if I could please, to limit the first public comment section to 30 minutes, to allow a 15-minute comment section at the end of the meeting, to allow those not allowed to speak during the first public comment session.
Steve, slow down for me, please.
To make a motion to limit the first public comment section to 30 minutes.
Yes, sir.
And to allow a 15-minute comment section at the end of the meeting, to allow for those not allowed to speak during the first public comment section due to the 30 minutes of the first comment period expiring.
Okay, so I have a motion to limit the public comment to 30 minutes and to the first part of the meeting, and to allow with a 15-minute public comment at the end of the meeting for those who were not allowed to speak at the first public comment session.
Yes, due to time expired.
Due to time expired.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Discussion.
We also want to put a limit on the time per argument, just evaluate that. When you see how many people want to comment today, is just one person to take the whole 30 minutes?
No, okay. Let's amend that motion to where people would have limited to three minutes.
Amend to limit to three minutes.
Yes.
Okay. So do I have a second for the amendment?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say that oftentimes whoever's speaking in public comment is sometimes interrupted by the people on this side of the table. And I think that that time that they're interrupted should be subtracted or added so that they have additional time to speak. And I'd say also we ought to amend that out to probably five minutes. And that'll give them plenty of time to get in what they want to say.
Okay?
That'd be my discussion point for that amendment.
I choose not to amend it to five minutes.
Okay. Alan?
See what works.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Nay.
Okay, four to one. I vote aye. Four to one, it passes. So we will have, are we making an agenda change then to follow public comment 30 minutes then tonight? And 15 minutes on the back end for those that didn't get to speak on the front end? So 30 minutes with three minutes total. And I will respect if we interrupt them not to stop the timer. How's that? 15 minutes on the back end for those not talking. All right. Any other changes to the minutes between minutes for the agenda for tonight? Pardon me.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session right after public comment for approximately 30 minutes.
And the reason, sir?
To discuss performance. Mr. Walker.
Can we, can we do that on a new business, or do you want to do it right away?
I would say right after public.
Okay. So we have a motion to move to go to executive session.
Do we want to prove the minutes first?
I think we're starting the agenda changes.
Restona, I think what Alan's saying, correct me if I'm wrong, are you asking that we move that to, you know, hold up.
Prove the minutes, we get the paperwork done, and then we're.
Let's get a second before we discuss this. Yeah, that's my bad for saying we didn't get a second. So we have a motion on the floor to move executive session for 30 minutes directly after the first public comment? All right, do I have a second? I don't have a second, the motion fails.
There's a reason for it that I don't understand. The night seconded it, but was moved till after the minutes approval. But I don't know what more executive session, building on this thing. I'm confused, but we can't chat about this other thing.
No, we can't. Yeah, so any other, you want to make an amendment to your?
I can amend to be after the minutes.
I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to go to executive session, session for 30 minutes. And I will explain this, and the only reason I do is because it's your first night, and I just want to make sure you don't want to amend it. 30 minutes is fine, that's your motion. We can always come out late, but we can't come out early. So if we make a motion and go to executive session for 30 minutes, we have to sit in there and stare at each other for 30 minutes. But we can come out late, but we can't come out early. So you want to stick with 30 minutes? It's your motion.
Okay, I can amend that.
We can stay later. It's what I, the only reason I'm saying that is we can stay later, we can't come out early. Okay? So executive session for 15 minutes following the minutes approval. I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, discussion.
Could you explain?
Rachel.
You said it's to discuss performance? Is that what I understood?
Yes. And I think that's acceptable to discuss performance amongst ourselves, to get our thoughts organized and not make any decisions, but at least see where we are and subjective thoughts on Mr. Walker and how he's done in the past year. And I think we're perfectly fine to discuss amongst ourselves.
The only concern I have, I'll be honest, amongst things which we're going to do is that he had asked for this to be done in public. Typically, we would have done this all in an executive session, I believe, but he's asked for it to be done in public. And that's kind of a, kind of a, typically, like I said, I think it would have been all been in an executive session, am I right? Am I right, Alan? But by him asking for it to be done in public, pardon me, it's kind of ballsy thing, I confess, so I'm kind of inclined to think that since he wants it done in public, we should do it in public, so.
Further discussion?
Well, I would disagree just because, and no, I'm fine with the performance evaluation in public, and that's great, you know, if he wants it on the record. But I would say it's always good for us as a group to at least have our thoughts organized and maybe not be tripping over each other in our discussions. That's my only thought.
15 minutes, right?
Do you want a comment for me?
I don't know.
No, because it's not, it has to do with your review, it has to do with performance. So.
Recall.
Any further discussion, Mr. Parker? Alan? Okay. Motion to go to executive session, 15 minutes, for 15 minutes to discuss the director's performance after the minutes approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have three ayes, all against. One nay. Two nays. So it passes, three to two. We got to prove the minutes there, Steve. That's what Alan was important about. So, and we got to do public comment, because it follows public comment. So, all right. Any further agenda changes? Because we're still on agenda changes here. No further? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to make sure we get our documents five days ahead of time if we only can do things collectively, but I was getting them at eight o'clock last night, it was too late to really do a proper job.
Okay. We have a motion to make sure that we get our documents five days in advance.
Yeah, because if you want the whole set of everything.
Okay.
Except if there's some emergency or something or other which you can't do five days.
Okay.
You know, but otherwise it's got to be just.
Motion to ensure.
The info last night, it was lucky I just happened to have.
Documents five days in advance.
I would take part in playing on that, not giving the minutes to you. And while we're trying to give minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Discussion. Steve, go ahead.
I would better give it to you, because a lot of times, I'll be honest, I'm doing the minutes the last weekend.
It's not involved. The bylaws and the way that we've done it since I've been here, basically, the agenda's out and we can advance the reports that come out sometime a few days generally before the meeting. But if you want, but we've got five days, you want me to push that forward, that's a problem.
I would say we're always five days ahead of time, and they run the off the work, so my last session on this.
But it's no problem, Alan, I don't have a problem doing it, it's just saying that it's.
Further discussion from the board?
Change.
Kirk? Ms. Lord? All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All against? Motion passes. All right, any other agenda changes? I guess we could have clumped that one under board issue, since it's right there. Any other board issues?
Just the documents.
Just the documents. We took care of that. Any others? Steve? Okay, Ms. Lord? Mr. Kirk? No, sir. All right, I have none. Public comments, if somebody would, Bill, would you please bring me the, and I got to change this to three minutes, oh good lord. Here.
That was easy.
Even I can do it. All right. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, 7:30, that's, yeah, we'll get everybody in. All right, perfect. We've got seven. We're back to 1,000. Before I start on public comment, a couple of quick things. Remember, as you speak, public comment, you address the board, nobody else. Please address all five board members. No board member individually, thank you. As you heard earlier, we got 30 minutes, we've got seven people. My limited mass skills tell me that we will be good on our three minutes per person. So, and if you want to speak, we need you to sign up at least, okay? And it was not amended. So we're doing good. I'm going to start, and Ms. Cindy Huffer.
So I saw Mr. Walker's comparison to the Northropian Aquatic Dukes proposal. So I went and did a high school proposal that went to high schools pay. Oakville High School District pays $3,530. In 1995, they paid $4,300, so we pay $1,000 less. And the Corvus pays $14,850. Birmingham pays $15,600. Mount Vernon, they go to YMCA and they are charged $100 an hour, and it equates between about $10,000 and $15,000 for the two seasons. For Townsend, it's very funny, they own their pool, but the city runs it, so they do whatever they want. So we are $10,000 below all of the local schools. So when he compares NWAQ dues that are $10 below the local swim dues, I think that that is, to me, I'm just, you know, I'm painting devil's advocate here, but, and then I called Everett, but they go to the Gold's Gym, and they said it's over $12,000 per school, and they have two pools over there in Everett. So we're $10,000 less. And I'm not saying that we need to charge a school more, but if we want to raise NWAQ dues, I'm thinking that maybe the high school needs to be raised as well. And I don't know that that can be done, because Mr. Walker said he's going to sign a contract tomorrow, which I thought was interesting that he could say that. And then I just have questions following up with what we received back in that packet, and I don't know if I'm allowed to talk about that. But we were told in that packet that there was an illness of a coach, and that's why the morning practices were canceled. However, I got an email, and all of NWAQ did, and I would like to know where that information came from, but I can't ask you questions. But Mr. Walker emailed the entire team on March 15th, and his direct quote was, "There will be no NWAQ practice at 5:30 a.m. for any of the groups between now, March 15th, and April 11th. There will be no Saturday practices, March 23rd or March 30th." There was no information given in this email regarding any illness from the coach, so if Mr. Walker told you that there was illness of the coach, that's not true. So that's kind of bothersome to me. And then the second part of the part that we had for that area was Mr. Walker, in an email, rigged, in a contract, or not a contract, but wrote to us that he would give us a $20 credit, which was our money that he had paid for dues. And yet my daughter usually can swim three mornings a week, and she was able to swim two mornings for the entire month of March. And, but yet, in that report, they said that it was okay to have an oral contract for that equal $4,400 to Mr. Richer. However, in the vouchers, Mr. Richer's agreement was for half of his month, and Northropian Park and Rex paid his full month in January and February and March. And he got a total of $4,400 above his salary. So I called the auditor's office, and I spoke to Jamie Bittler, CPA, and she said it is illegal to have an oral contract, you have to have a written contract for public funds. So they will be investigated, she will be hearing the call.
Thank you. All right. Julie Wilson.
The district can no longer afford Bill Walker. Every crisis he claims to have solved has generated negative publicity that has affected public perception of the district. The latest crisis reported in the Whipping News Times after Bill Walker granted an interview was ostensibly about the district gifting free swimming to NWAQ alumni. Several things disturbed me about Mr. Walker's statements in the last board meeting and in the paper. First was Mr. Walker's assertion that at the board meeting that last summer, six swimmers took advantage of the free swimming. If not for members of the audience informing the board of the inaccuracy of this statement in spite of no public comment being allowed, the board would proceed with its debate based on misinformation. Why, instead of admitting to the board that he did not know how many swimmers were alumni, did he choose to manufacture a number? Since my son was one of the swimmers who returned for two summers to compete for NWAQ, I did some research to be sure the board received accurate information on this subject. Since Neil Romney was hired as head coach, no more than three collegiate swimmers at that time had returned for summer training in any given summer. For most summers, there were only two swimmers. In addition, contrary to the information given to the Whipping News Times by Mr. Walker, only NWAQ alumni currently competing in college have been allowed to train with the team at no charge. I am greatly concerned about the other misinformation you and the public may have been given by Mr. Walker in the past, with no accurate source of information was present to contradict it, and what decisions may have been made based on that misinformation. Bill Walker repeatedly demonstrates his lack of respect for board authority by joining discussions about policy issues and making policy decisions without board approval or even board knowledge. Attempting to make the alumni swimming decision is only one such instance, and made more egregious when he used false information in accordance with the board's decision. Bill Walker strives to carry out the board's policies. He is not an elected official and has no place in policymaking discussions. He was not, as he has stated, hired to make decisions. He was hired to implement the policies and the will of the board. Mr. Walker has repeatedly stated his opinion in public that district programs was notably NWAQ's and running at last. Setting aside for a moment that this is another policy issue over which Mr. Walker, as director, has no authority, this opinion is in direct opposition to the mission of the district as it was created in the early 1980s. This district was formed to provide publicly supported and subsidized recreational opportunities for this community. The levy passage indicates the continued community support of this business model through. Since Mr. Walker's personal views prevent him from publicly and enthusiastically supporting this mandate, Mr. Walker's continued presence as director is damaging to this district. Mr. Walker's actions over the past year and the negative publicity generated by the threat to the survival of the district and perfect passage of the next levy at risk. Mr. Walker's actions affecting district programs have drastically reduced the number of patrons who are ongoing loyalties to the district. It takes tremendous time, energy, and manpower to overcome negative public opinion. There were only three people from programs other than NWAQ that volunteered to help with the last levy. There were over 100 people associated with NWAQ that donated their time. When the NWAQ numbers dwindened rapidly, many NWAQ members had discouraged and disenchanted from the program. Where will that workforce come from when it's time to pass the next levy? Bill Walker needs to be replaced with a director who respects board authority, present the board with accurate information, and will wholeheartedly support the mission of the district and the community to support recreation. Thank you.
Lynn?
My family became regular users of this pool almost 20 years ago. As youth swim patrons, we were highly satisfied. The facility and the team, the merchant was good, and my limited interaction with the director was positive, always positive. Three years ago, NWPRD went in the national spotlight, and it was revealed that during the time I thought that all was right in the NWPRD world, the director was violating the public trust and abusing our community's children. When this story broke, the former Mr. Club president said, "District leaders wouldn't listen to concerns about his behavior. Many of us spoke up, but no one listened to us, only labeled us as people, those who spoke up as troublemakers or disgruntled members of parents." Reports from the investigating officer at the time are similar. The board was warned but failed to act and instead protected the director by functioning in a good old boy fashion. While the issues we're worrying now are not as salacious and do not have the same kind of criminal implications, situations are not about similarities. The board has supervisory authority over reckless and retaliatory directors who has violated the public trust and the trust of this board. And as the public's trying to make you aware, we, like those of 15 years ago, have been labeled as troublemakers and disgruntled swimmers and parents. The former board chairman described it as public comments, public bitch session. Now I understand that Director Walker suggested the NWAQ codes of conduct provide a basis for silencing the dissenting voices of our youth. Mr. Walker's created a culture of contention, manipulation, and dishonesty that he would like to control through a culture of fear. You are the gatekeepers. Collectively, you're in charge. If we learned anything from the Andy King case, I hope we learn that the board must be highly sensitive and responsive to the concerns of the public, and that our youth must know that they are safe to speak without fear of retaliation or retribution. You are responsible for creating policy. You are responsible for the welfare of the district, to service to the public upon whose good will the district attends. If you allow the continued leadership of this director, who has justifiably earned his spot as the lightning rod for conflict, his dishonesty becomes yours. His disdain for the mission and purpose of this district becomes yours. And you begin to own a sleight of hand, now you see it, now you don't, it depends on what the meaning of this is, approach to truth, transparency, and integrity. That will not change because you give him more time, because of the findings of an audit, or because he wears a green turtle suit, generates a donation of plans, or finally abides by a nine-month-old resolution. He's had time and opportunity to do better, and he either will know it or cannot. If Mr. Walker's allowed to continue, the passive acts actions will become obvious in four years, where the next levy fails, the facility is shuttered. The more enduring costs of his actions have already begun to be paid. Nothing can fully restore what he's destroyed, but you can begin to stop the bleeding. You have the opportunity to do what the board of the 1990s can opt in. You can honor the trust of the people you serve, you can listen to those who speak, you can tell Mr. Walker that services are no longer needed. You have the power, and I also hope that you have the courage of your convictions.
Hello, ma'am. I don't know if I can explain this in three minutes. Recently, our daughter used to swim for Northropian Aquatic. And recently, in April, there was a public request put in. And Phil was kind enough to call Amanda and let her know that this had come in. But it came in from the fiance of a 64-year-old creepy man from the college. And at the time, I said I have no problems with her work records being released, because she was a paid employee in the district. And he said he had 1,500 copies sitting on his desk that needed to be redacted. And I'm like, whoa, whoa, whoa. So the records went back to when she was seven years old. So I, being a little creeped out that those records, even redacted, could be released, I had several conversations with Mr. Walker, I had several conversations with the dean at the college. I spoke to Mr. Walker the day before he left on his vacation to let him know that I had been in touch with Tim Ford, who was down at the Attorney General's Office, who indicated that minor records for kids who participate in your programs are exempt from disclosure. I contacted him, he was going to have his assistant, I believe, to have Nicole follow up. He copied it to the district's attorney, who still, the last time Mr. Walker and I spoke, about a week ago, holds that because this is a public parks and rec district and is financed by taxpayer money, all records are disposable. Now, if that, if the district holds to that after talking to the AG's office, the purpose for meeting here tonight is if that is the interpretation that the district's going to take, that the district attorney's going to take, I would like a disclosure put on the bottom of every application for every student or every person who signs up for any running club, swimming, because there's a lot of parents out there who want to protect their children's privacy. And, I mean, I could give you several examples of how this is used in a not good way. There's some things that I've wondered about for years, and under the current definition, I could come and put, and you know, we're told you can get an injunction, but in order to do that, you have to file a suit in Superior Court. Now, if anybody's parent lawyer lately, it's going to cost the average person $4,000 or $5,000 to get that injunction to stop the records from being released. So if that's what, you know, the district's going to do, there needs to be that there so parents are aware that their children's records are not stable. And that's what we're believing here.
Thank you. Nanette, um, Nanette, Nanette, I'm sorry. Who'd you speak to down at the state AG's office again?
Tim Ford. Tim Ford?
Ford?
Ford.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, okay.
And actually, the documents, I asked him specifically, was the word example?
I don't want to take time away from somebody else, so what I'll do is I'll get with you later. If you don't mind. How do I reset this bad boy? All right. Ms. Julie Krantz.
Well, I appreciate the subcommittee's work in investigating the charges and complaints against Director Walker, and I recognize that those findings have not been officially accepted by the board. I am concerned about that there are errors or omissions regarding some of the facts surrounding several of the charges. Beyond those charges and whether or not the director's conduct has been legal, it is clear that many of the director's actions have been destructive and imprudent. He has raced headlong into unpopular and unwise decisions that have had devastating consequences for the district and its patrons. The public is not simply unhappy or dissatisfied. The public has been harmed, and doing better next time is not a sufficient remedy for the most egregious of the director's destructive actions. To suggest that the director's failure to act in the best interest of the district's patrons and programs was a failure for the board to adequately guide and oversee him is to suggest that competently commitment to mission and character of the director is dependent upon the board keeping a very tight leash and a very close eye on every move of the director and acting as his moral conscience. As long as the viability of NWPRD depends on the goodwill of the public, the service of an. of an elected volunteer board and the efficacy of the daily administration of the district's programs and services paid by the pay director, a structural paradigm that requires that the board interject good judgment, common sense, respect for the authority of the board, and good character into the director's daily actions, is a paradigm doomed for failure and not a sustainable model for a thriving district. NWPRD has always been, and for as long as it survives, it will always be, subject to the leadership of a volunteer board that is often inexperienced. That reality thereby makes it essential for any director to possess the competency, the character, investment in the mission, and the purpose of the district necessary to be a professional and a wise advocate for the interests of the board, and to demonstrate a persistent propensity for sound judgment, uncompromising integrity, and a deep respect for value of the district's mission, its programs, and its value to the community. Director Walker has routinely failed on all counts, and regardless of the board's determination regarding the legality of his conduct, that's proven that he is not fit to serve as director of NWPRD.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's been my observation over the last six, eight months or so that the, you know, the public relations of this pool and of the Northwood Parks and Recreation District has greatly improved, be it from coming in here to a birthday party and all of the staff being in a wonderful mood, or the tent that the district had at Holland Happenings or July 4th, or the turtle costume that me and my son hugged. I was, I guess I was selfishly hoping there was a cute girl in the costume. I just found out that I'd been Bill in it. But I, when I come in here, I notice there's an attitude change. And at the Northwood Parks and Rec tent at the Holland Happenings on July 4th, they just seem so happy, you know? And just look out there. This pool's one of the happiest places in the island. Regardless of the negativity in this room, this pool is one of the most positive places on all of Woodby Island. I, it's my observation that the direction this pool is headed is that of a great one. As far as anything putting the next levy in jeopardy, putting the pool in jeopardy, really putting in jeopardy whether children can learn how to swim and stay active, it's not this, man. It's a few negative people. And basically, what sums that up is the fact that anybody would think it's appropriate for this director to be compared to Andy King. Absolutely uncalled for. And I'll leave it at that, but I hope that the board doesn't listen to the vocal minority. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Brandon?
I'm going to provide a minute. Um, I, no, I don't know how to make this, but we said a person could speak once for three minutes, and I think that's allowed, man.
Can you read what Len said?
Unfortunately, you don't have any writing, and I probably need one minute. If you got, if you want to change your role, maybe you can change your role.
Yes, that's fine. One minute.
Because it's actually a different subject. I just want to talk about the N W A C.
And the reason, let me say why. Because you can have a case where 10 people gave their three minutes, and then you get somebody that gets up and talks for 30 minutes. And, you know, and I think if we're going to set something, we got to set it. Now, I think we as a board, not just me, have to decide on a minute. And let's say either...
I said I'll speak for a minute, so I don't need you to tell me that.
Actually, we do. At this point, we do at this point in time. It's about setting a precedence. It really is.
Okay, so we have a motion. We'll call the motion.
I'm making a motion right now to extend a minute to Len Vaught.
We have a motion to, excuse me. Thank you very much. There's a motion made by a board member. Thank you. Go ahead, Steve.
I will make a motion right now to extend one minute time to Len Vaught to speak once more in public comment.
I have a motion to extend another minute to Len Vaught to speak this evening in public comment. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second.
But we can't count time. We're talking about...
That's correct. We cannot. Do we have any further discussion on this? No further discussion. All in favor, all right? All against? Motion carries. Passions. Take your time.
Ten seconds. Let's just say that ask you to review the rules for that, but you can do that in the middle of something else where we have to make an...
We will.
The N W A C proposal, I hope when you get to that, beyond the dues increase, there's a lot of structural changes suggested, and yet there's no basis for which those are agreed. There's no sensitivity to this community and its unique demographics. We don't even know if we can run a meeting. I don't know how we could possibly say everyone needs to volunteer to ours. It talks about a mandatory district club, and yet even the audit doesn't need for that. There's a whole lot of things that are answering the problem that I don't know anybody's explained that they exist. And the budget, as far as the money part, we don't even see the budget. We don't know where all the numbers come from. So I hope before anybody makes any decisions on that, we just get some more information first.
Thank you. Everybody in brief, Len. Okay, that's all we have for public comment tonight. That to the side. Minutes approval, yes, minutes approval. Oh, we have Kirk in, yeah. Can you guys hang on and let us do minutes approval real quick, and then we'll hear from you guys, and then we're going to go on to the executive session, okay? So that way we get you guys out of here. And I get, thank you for your patience. Thanks for coming to the meeting. So minutes approval. Minutes for the May 23rd, 2013 regular meeting. Let's look at those first. Any changes, deletions, or comments?
I'll move that we accept the minutes, but then I want to make about five changes.
Okay, so I have a movement to accept, I have a motion to accept the minutes for May 23rd, 2013. Do I have a second? I have a second discussion. Alan?
Okay, I read a statement, and it's not quite accurately, and some of the changes are important. It's on the first page, bottom paragraph. They may not look important, but they can be. Bill assumed, the fourth line down in the last paragraph, Bill assumed many mismanaged district components when he took on the director's position, not that district's director, the director's position. He also stepped into the role with relatively inexperienced, culminating in the director making many decisions that were not popular and subsequently led the board to recognize that the flexibility, it, take of that page, it's a it, had prescribed...
Sorry. Alan, just lining it up.
I'm on the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 up from the bottom. It's not that page, it's it, had prescribed, and the director's boundaries needed to be contained. That's all for that page. And then on the next page, on the first line, the previous decisions outcomes as initially established loose boundaries for Bill Walker in managing the district, not and managing the district. And then the one really important one is broader questions of governance, not government, governance, that's the behavior and running of where you have the second class line, the first, it's government with a G in the minutes. It should be governance with no big G. And that just means the behavior in managing the place is something we have to deal with today under the performance review. So we haven't provided...
So this is just verbatim, should be verbatim out of this.
The rest of it's okay. But that's, I have...
We had some type of, Steve or me, I don't know, but those are obvious types of... There, that's right. Thank you.
All right. Further corrections for the May 23rd, 2013 minutes? Okay. Kirk?
Well, I would like to mention that looking at bylaws, which discusses board meeting records, section 3.10A, minutes, proceedings of the board meetings shall be recorded and maintained in accordance with the RCW 42.56. Minutes shall consist primarily of the record of the action taken. I don't see the point of having verbatim minutes. Is that, I think, or is that something?
We discussed that before. No, 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 it's, you know what, it's a, I have no prob, I think we can discuss that real quick if you guys don't mind.
I would rather that, honestly, that there were people that were not happy with that part.
We have the recording, right?
I would love to do, that's, I would love to do it that way.
That's just mine.
Okay, I'm going to, can we table that then for boardish, or to your business?
Sure.
Okay, all right. So, no, 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 it's all good. It's all good. Any other comments about the minutes? All right. Any other comments about the minutes for May 23rd? And please remind me when I get back to you. Thank you. So, we have a motion to accept the May 23rd, 2013 minutes as changed. Do I have a second? Second? All in favor, all right? May's finished. So, do I have a motion to change the June 5th, or to accept, change, or correct the June 5th, 2013 minutes? No?
I'd move it again, but I have another change.
Okay, so can I get a motion to change, accept, or correct the May, or the June 5th, 2013 minutes?
Make a motion to change the June 2013 minutes.
I have a motion to change the June 2013 minutes. Do I get a second?
Sure.
Thank you. I got a second. I can't do either one of those, so thank you, guys. Changes, Alan?
It's under N W A C, it's on page three, I think, if you're not... 1, 2, 3.
N W A C?
And it's Stephen Googlestacy is cranking on this. I don't know why that's in there, but that's fine. And it's been through a lot of data, and we're talking about the report of the subcommittee and its recent subcommittee work. They've seen no violation of the law per se, but he has seen much violation of public practice. And what we have here is issues. They're not issues. It's public practice. It's questions of governance. And we have, we saw a lot of that. They were documented in the complaints that we had to investigate. So I'm not going to have that word changed. Practice for issues.
All right. Any other changes, corrections, or deletions?
I have a question about page, on page five, first paragraph. Now, I missed some meetings because I wasn't on the permission, but it says, "De-Walker also stated that under the 2013 budget assumptions, we plan to consider a June's increase over all of the N W A C program to begin in September. I do not remember ever being part of that." It's the first paragraph on page five of the minutes.
Thank you. Okay, got it. I'm caught up. Thank you.
I got my comments on these things that I had to print out.
I'm good. I'm caught up.
Okay.
Page, page 13 on the agenda, folks.
Yeah, I do not remember that ever, the least agreed and principal to N W A C.
Are you asking a question?
Well, I don't know if I'm asking a question off. I'm worried about the paragraph right now.
Just ask me if you want a response from me.
I'd love to know what it is, because I don't remember.
And I'd like to clarify, are you asking that you don't remember hearing this piece of the discussion in the June meeting, or you don't remember that being in the budget assumptions?
Either or both. It all comes out the same thing.
The budget was approved with a list of assumptions in November, which I believe was before you were...
Like, did it reason not to remember?
Doesn't mean we have to stick with those assumptions. You know, that was just part of the budget that was passed.
Okay.
So there were assumptions behind those numbers.
And it's in writing in the June meeting, which I can go get, so we won't waste anybody's time.
Right, it's in the recording.
Okay.
You're good?
I don't think it'd be in there if it wasn't recorded. I hope not, too.
Any more?
No, just there's a discussion on page five, top right down, about missions for... Nope.
No, no further changes?
No further changes.
Okay. Any other, any other changes, corrections, or deletions? All in favor of approving the June 5th, 2013 minutes with the changes made? All right? All against? Abstain? Abstention?
Yeah, just abstain.
Abstain. Two abstentions, three ayes, and passes. All right, before we go to the executive session, we are going to hear from the running club report. So if you guys can give us your report real quick.
I think my type of rule of operations is, it collects two, last two pages.
Last two pages. Go in there now.
Take it brief if you like.
Oh, good. Nice and busy.
It's pretty brief. And that's what I'm saying. I was the one who said, "Where is you going?"
Craig with the Department of Health. I'd set up a information network, and I came up with a little brochure, available to people in the community so they knew what recreational programs were available beyond the district. It included other agencies in the community that had software and so on and so forth. And what this sounds like is very much like that for little kids. And I'm wondering if you've had a chance to dig into, find out what history's there, what interagency coordination there is, and what sort of pooling of resources, because you could take the lead role if it sort of failed. But, you know, it's, there's something there that looks like that, and it's only three years ago.
With the Department of Health, is it?
Oh, it's us. And Craig Carlson was leading it up for the community, and there were 20 agencies involved in it. And it had the various running clubs, various software programs that were available. There are four in the town. There is all sorts of stuff going on. There's a...
We have a brochure.
Yeah, we used to have a brochure. South Woodby Parks and Rec still does that with their community. We brought this up at an earlier board meeting. And they, I'm trying to... South Woodby still puts it out, we don't. And I think what he's referring to is we actually did that before it hit, under Craig. So it might...
There might be files in there that will help you out.
Yeah, I've seen the South Woodby, and I think I did follow in on the same page. It'd be great if we did something like that. It's more than just us, that's a community, community thing, because we don't offer nearly... I think a lot of those classes in South Woodby are also done by other people, our classes, Kai classes, and may not be done by South Woodby. It's hard to say. It's easier for them because their budget isn't probably $500 million a year right there. Or, you know, they don't have the tools. Their budget is a lot easier to be able to do things that they do that we're not able to do. But we could definitely work something like, if someone kind of the news...
Curtis, my understanding with South Woodby, they didn't, their Parks and Rec district didn't do it. It was in conjunction with the other groups. And I believe that's what Alan's saying we did in the past, too, correct?
Yeah, as I vaguely remember, the whole cost for the whole program, including participation of people, is under $5,000. But we'll have files on it, that's what I'm saying, it's three years ago, and it was a fairly broad thing. The city was involved...
Maybe something different, though. But think your time is, I've seen like in the Woodby Wiggly, I think it's called now, that's free. There'll be a pamphlet inside there by, it's Southwood Park and Rec around the cover, is that one that you're referring to?
I don't remember.
I understand, I understand we are, but when you're talking about what they do, you're talking about that one I've seen in pamphlet.
But we did that before they did.
But am I clear with what I'm saying on that, though? I can see theirs now, I can't see ours now.
Right, we haven't done it in three years, is what Alan's saying.
But you're sort of the same type of thing.
He's saying we should do it again.
That's what I'm saying.
This was a, this was a published brochure, this was a website, this was just a...
This was, it was like a... You know how you get Northwest Outdoors magazine?
Yeah.
All right? Instead of having articles written about mountaineering, or biking, or skiing, or about the ski to sea, whatever the big race up in Bellingham is, what South Woodby does, and stop you, is they put out a magazine that's similar to Northwest Outdoors, but it just lists all the summer programs or all the fall programs they have. They put it out like two or three times a year, correct?
Yeah, we, the thing is, the thing is that those files, oh, no, we did it. We didn't do the Northwood one. We did one right here with Oak Carver and the facilities in this region in it. And you should have the files somewhere in that office. And so what I'm saying is to save your time with your ideas here. You may find that there's a whole infrastructure there that you can rebuild.
Sure.
You know, with a lot of policy.
Sure. You just read the letter about the idea maybe as the hub of youth activities?
Yeah.
Correct. And right now, I have a listing of all the youth programs sports-wise right now. They get in contact and say, hey, we're not trying to do anything like take over your program, but give us your information and I'll make a board somewhere so parents can come and find registration. Find maybe schedules the games where they're going to be. They come to us. We don't take any money from them. We're not dealing with it like that. It's just a place to make. How many kids do we see through swim school probably every session? Close to 200.
Keep going.
You know? So, more than that. I'm just, rough guess, I mean, Enwak?
We're 280 involved right now. We have 280 enrolled right now, right?
236.
236. I thought it was 280.
So, I guess to say a lot of youth probably come through our facility. So, that would be a good place for them. How's that affect the running club a little bit or the fitness clubs or whatnot? Not my fitness class, but the running club, but say fitness club or go that route. They have a young player group who's not old enough to use programs. A lot of times usually 35. They come to us, we're going to prep them for that program. Or we offer that brochure. They want us to come up, check out what we do. It's kind of a feeder program to us and a feeder to Alex and to the other brothers. And hopefully, the sports programs outside do the same thing. Some kid calls up, says, yeah, I'm thinking about playing tackle football. How old is your son? I'm only 30. Maybe I go, just go see this person because you've got to be at least five. Hopefully, someone pays for it and settle a little bit.
A lot of families that come through the area, um, and having a place where they can get in touch with all of the programs and find out what all of the programs are available for kids to get involved in is a really important service, you know, especially given the migrant population, so I'm thinking about it right now. And so, it performed a really important function. I'm glad, I'm sorry that it lapsed. But as I said before, wherever the files are here, they're not really old, so you should be able to find them again. And you should be able to find copies of that brochure. And I went down to some of the meetings and we had 20 agencies sitting in the city halls. We were trying to draft that thing out.
I've seen it, you know, and it was ironic. You mentioned, said, no, I missed it a long time ago with the Whidby's each one first off. You know? I want to confuse it with this. I opened up the Whidby Weekly and I saw that what you're talking about from South Whidby. I saw, yeah, we should have a catalog of all the events we did. We did. And nobody said that. I had no idea. I'd never seen it before. But I was like, this is great. It's not just phys classes, but I'm saying it was art classes, kite classes. It was everything. So, it's a collaboration of the community getting together. It's definitely doable. We'll have some difficulty, and I'll only say it because a large chunk of what's available here is the military side of the house, which they'll promote their own thing and we can't work together. Not because they don't want to. It's because, and I spent all day today with the FFR guys, is they can't promote anything that we do that they offer because now it's competition, if you will. Not negative in that sense. I'm just saying that their hurtness is, so if we start offering something out there that's cheaper, we don't want it to all leave from there. If that makes sense. Who's the FFR? It was Wayne guy, Wayne Shore, I guess for the region.
Wayne Shore, who you've seen. He's the region guy from Kitsap. Here it's Clarissa.
Might be Maya, somebody works in the local area.
More out in the bar.
20 friends, 20 friends.
Plead family readiness. Yeah. FFR.
That's right.
Yep.
I always say plead family reserve.
No, it's plead family readiness.
That's a little off topic.
So, what do we do to support this place? We make a motion to keep the running club? Because now we've been kind of putting this thing off for four months, I think now.
Yep.
And with you guys, but I'm thinking it's a good thing. So, I'd like to, do I make a motion for that? I'd like to make a motion that we support the running club. And we look at it, maybe.
Fitness club.
Pardon?
Fitness club.
The fitness club. Yeah. We support the fitness club. When we look at this thing again in six months, any year, maybe give us a report in six months how things are going. I think it's a great thing.
It might be a little bit sooner just because right now.
Oh, my gosh. Thanks. So, I have a motion to support the fitness club with a report in six months on how things are going, correct, Steve?
Yes.
I have a second. Do I have any further discussion?
To say it might be a little bit sooner than six months. If I can't find affordable indoor facility by October, we'll table it through until March. It's a little too cold in those timeframes for our, our, our kids, young kids, it gets way too cold that timeframe. If I can't secure affordable indoor facility for it, it's a late march.
So, when are you going to stop that?
Like, October to March. If I can, I'm working on trying to find the indoor facilities that are affordable. If I can, then we can stop.
You know, I'm in the motion to look at this again in October.
That's the same.
So, we will support, we have a motion to support the fitness club until October?
Yes.
At which time will we receive a report?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
It seemed to me your two pages talked about an information hub. The fitness thing is fine. What I'm most interested in is the making sure that you're following up on the information hub idea, getting some visibility for the district and that. So, but, you know, I don't know if that's covered in the motion or not. We want to say the fitness club and the information initiative, just by many, by any of those two words, are the binding issue.
So, fitness club, you said it in the round, I'm sorry.
An information initiative. The hub, the truth, is finding out what other programs are available. Initiative. The two pages that you wrote.
Certainly. Or still on that end, if you guys keep correcting me. I'm going to keep this till October, but that's going.
So, we have a.
You come to us.
Did you want to amend that?
I do. I want to amend it, but I want to get this right. To be a fitness club, but also an information hub.
Add the information initiative.
An information initiative?
That's right.
Okay.
So, a motion to support the fitness club and information initiative until October, when a further report is due. Can I have a second for that?
Second.
Second. Any other further discussion?
So, yes. So, is there some kind of benchmark with this fitness club, is it what you're calling it? I'm not very familiar with it. I have seen the kids out on the field and it looks kind of like, you know, they're pretty young kids, so what equate maybe to a little bit of, you know, a place where parents could bring their kids after school or during school and things like that. But is there a fee-based schedule to this? And how is it? We talk a lot about money in this district and what programs we are going to support versus what, which ones are going to be losing profit for us and taking away money from programs and being more valuable or just retaining the district.
Asking about how much they pay a month.
Well, I'm trying to understand what's your, where's our benchmark? Because you're a fairly new club, right? You're a fairly new program? Is that right? Do I understand?
The fitness club? I mean, I would say yes and I would say no. The running club idea has been around since about 2001. Right. Now you're done? It's been around.
I know it's a struggle.
Fitness club that's turned over is a year everybody, as far as the new coaches.
So, it's sort of combined thing a little bit or just?
It was originally running club, then running club. The person who had left formed their own club, maintained the name, this is all as far as I understand. That's not the word you got. Maintain the name, would be running club. We couldn't use that. We call it Northwood, yeah, running club. Decided here a little bit later on that there was confusion between having two running clubs, one of them is supported by us, and now that there's a tribal one in town. So, that's where we're kind of at here to say, we're going to say more like fitness club to differentiate ourselves between the two, two other options. Now, as far as fees, it's a two-week trial, just like Benwak is, I believe it's two-week trial. And it's $24 a month thereafter. It's the same kind of 10% off for every additional child. As I believe that might.
I'm not sure that.
It's 10%, or it's a percentage off for each additional child. We follow the guidelines, we're just with the guidelines that were put in place for the original running club to an extent. We don't differentiate between rookie, pro, or semi-pro. This is right.
I mean, I know a lot of programs aren't self-supported because we do have to use tax dollars to support the programs, and that's fine. And I'm on board with that, but, you know, I'm not sure where your numbers are in this.
Do I have to have any numbers?
Yeah.
We are not quite up to self-supporting. Probably maybe at the 15%. Because I was saying, I mean, I can't speak of everybody, whatever. The only money that gets put into it is whatever is paid to the coaches. We don't have any, we don't have to rent any land space. We're using equipment that's already here. We don't buy any extra stuff for it because it's just strictly whatever. And we're just going to sell it. And we'll review this again in October. It's just, or even sooner for the FFRs.
How is that 10 minutes?
10 minutes, about an average of 14 to 15 kids. Seems like a strong 15. We'll drop off two or three. I think a month ago it was around seven. I'm just before seven.
That's what raised this whole issue, was a concern over, you know, winter time we're down to two, you know? Obviously, paying two coaches, not really feasible, and we're not differentiating ourselves from the other club. So, that's how this whole discussion started a few months ago. These guys have done an awesome job of fleshing this out into something that where we really feel like our age group and our programs offer something that, well, it does set us apart from the other club. And, you know, if they get to 10, 11 years old, they want to focus on running, gladly send them over to the table. Which we have sent, I think, at least two or three cases.
I like what Curtis said about benchmarks. And we've addressed it here briefly. We went from seven to 15. So, you've doubled in a couple of months. All right? And when we look at budgets and money, you know, money in and money out, that's a horrible, you know, that's a horrible way to look at things, but unfortunately, that's the reality of the situation we live in. So, you know, with what we're going to be spending, what's our benchmarks? That's something I guess I want to know, too. In October, when we look at this again, what should we expect to see? What should the board expect to see? What are you, you know, what kind of benchmarks have you set for yourselves? I mean, it's July. So, we've got August, September, October. So, three months, what benchmarks do you want to have? That's short-term goals. That's some really short-term goals. And what realistic short-term goals are you going to bring back to us to convince us that we want to continue on with this?
Ms. Megan's not going to bring anything back to you in October because she's getting married first in September. She's going to leave this.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I think, well, you know, the last sentence in that letter, I think, is kind of benchmarks where the direction I thought. Because with it is that I don't want someone to come, let me, we're really dependent on the levy to pass the also, right? Whereas with willing to raise for us, it's really having conventional means, it's reality and whatever we're possible. I don't want somebody to go to that levy and say, my kids don't swim, I'll just forget it. Because we're more than that right now. This is one of those programs, programs is more than that. When it comes to benchmark or a rough idea, I would go out there where it takes to believe this program. As a volunteer, it's likely enough money to support at least my wages, it's very little. As long as I see the same thing and I don't know what it's going to look, a swim program can support itself the same. I read a newspaper article that said about 40 grand subsidized to Enwak. And I love that one. I agree with the program. So, I'm not going to be anywhere near that one.
Okay. So, to keep the controversy and.
I'm not.
No, 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 hold on.
I'll watch.
Stop. So, what benchmarks are you going to set? That's what I want to hear.
Yeah. Or you want, I can tell you now.
Yeah, that's what I want.
I would see, as long as I can bring in about $250 a month to run that program, that's all I need. I'd make very little doing that. I can tell you that right now. And that's all I need to support it. That's about 15 kids.
On my side, pardon my follow-up for what Sean's saying, and there's no coordination, but I'm tired of talking about money because we haven't got permission statement yet. Permission statement for this place was to provide a wide variety of high-quality programs at the lowest fees possible for the community, not penny-pinching and for being driven by economics. So, what I want to see is how many kids are involved and what you're doing in the way of programs so that they're getting something out of that. You know, that's what I would like to see sort of defined down. And the money stuff, we'll all take a look at, we'll see for some together. I mean, we'll see what happens.
I agree. You're not all about the.
That's what I want for short-term goals. We went from seven to 15, as I mentioned. So, where do you want to be in October?
I still want to be at least 15.
I guess, because you wanted us to look at October. If it's less than, what number would it be where you would say, okay, let's put this thing up to March?
At least 12. That kind of depends on what it's going to cost for the remaining facility.
Okay. There we go. Thank you. That's what I want. All right. So, we've got a motion to support the fitness club and the information initiative until October. All in. Any other discussion? No? All in favor? Aye. All right. Motion passes. Thank you, guys. Thanks for staying. Good luck.
Kurt, you keep doing what you're doing, man.
Yeah, doing great.
You look like you're bigger.
Seven to 15 is going slow. All right, we are going to, it is 8:04. We are going to go into executive session until 8:19. All right, we are back from executive session at 8:41. And now, almost has to find his agenda. I think vouchers are next. There we go. We have voucher review for May 2013. Starting on page 15 in the public packet. Questions, comments from the board.
I hadn't had a chance to go through them. I just got these last night.
Yeah, I have some questions.
Go ahead.
We had these department revenue fees. Apparently, they're fees generated based on using a credit card. Is that correct? So why are we using this credit card and generating $45, $40 fees?
Well, as you know, there's a voucher process. The alternative is we could use cash transfer, which would not be allowed under a voucher process. Or we could get the voucher and mail the check in, but in that case, we'd have to do the department revenue report probably like by the first week of the month. And our revenues are not always booked and reviewed by that time.
So are these sales tax, sales taxes we're paying?
Right, and it has to be paid by the 25th of January.
So we know at the end of the month what the sales tax is going to be, and then by the 25th, it has to be paid. So that's 25 days out, is that correct?
Generally, it takes a few days or a couple of weeks sometimes to get that, all that data entered in for the previous month. I wouldn't really even be confident of it until 15th of March, from what I've seen.
And so if we had that petty cash account set up where it was essentially to be a checking account through Whidby Island Bank, you could use checks from that as a director. And you are the auditing officer, right? So you can approve vouchers, and we can pay, cut you a check at the county within about a week if you give us a voucher. If you are the auditing officer, you can approve those vouchers. So I would like to see that the credit card is stopped from being used, and maybe, do I need to make a motion there, or is that just a question about that?
That's, that's, what we're doing now is we're doing voucher review. So we can, it's been brought to attention, can we move that to new business?
You betcha.
So, and what was the other thing I moved to new business, Kurt? I told you, I forget, I did.
Oh, that was the discussion of the reducing the minutes to just those items that...
Discussion on minutes?
To only the discussion of minutes that are actually acted on.
Got it. Yep, remember, minutes reducing. And then also, we're going to add, what do you want to call this? Credit card?
Well, yeah, I think it'd be a credit card review in using these credit cards, which are also, apparently, there's some fees, and seeing that Mr. Walker and Matt Morris had $25 fees on their over-limited fees I found in these things. Can you discuss what those are? Sure, I'm addressing that in my report, actually. That's because the limits on your card do not take...
We have to stop. We'll discuss that in the report and during...
It's in my director's report.
Okay, we'll discuss that in the director's report. Is that okay with you?
Well, remember to look at it.
I got it right by you. I got it right.
Okay, great, great.
Is that good? All right.
Thing else, we had one, let's see, trying to find somebody. Somebody was shopping at the commissary with a credit card. Shelley Wilcox, Whidby Island NES, $111 on...
Which page on?
This page here, right here.
That's 20...
I don't think we can do that.
No, no, no. I'm looking for...
It's non-taxable.
Fool's Day.
You know, area, it's Navy-owned. You could shop at the NAX or the commissary. I know that nonprofits...
Page 17. Page 17.
Correct, is what it is. Page 17.
Yes, sir. Nope, that's good. So page 17, we're talking about charge made on 4/20, transaction date at 4/20, is that correct? To the commissary.
That's correct. So the issue is that because she has the right to go to the commissary, she's not being charged sales tax.
Right.
We don't get that benefit because of just...
That's to an individual.
Did you sort of look into that and clarify that?
I don't think...
Do you know that for sure?
That's for sure. That is, yeah, the privilege, that was the word. Actually, it's the military, it's an entitlement. I wanted to make sure I used the rest correctly because I'm on tape and it's public record. The entitlement of using the commissary and the BX is for active-duty members, reservists with a commissary card, or retirees.
For their own use.
For their own use.
Not for lawyers' use.
The entitlement of using those is for active-duty members, reservists, retirees. That's correct.
All right, we will stop doing that. Thank you.
Let me ask you, anyone seen photos, $75?
I am, that one, I believe, was while I was... Go on, let's see here. Which pages are those two?
16.
It's the pendulum...
Yeah. What I'm guessing is that that was...
It's a voucher number, 5826.
Oh, right. That was during May while I was gone. I believe that was probably the stock photos for, oh, the coach, oh, the coach photos. Yeah, I'm guessing that's what it was, $75.
I have a question on page 31, goggles. Is that the goggles that we buy that are available to people who go to parties in Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve district vouchers.
Oh, I still, I don't know, I have one other thing here.
We can go for more discussion?
Yeah, I would like to.
Okay, go ahead.
Back here on page, under Mr. Walker's card, I believe, on page, what is it, 34? I'm looking at the thing with page numbers. You have kayak business cards under your card? Oh, yeah, that's for Pete Stevens. He's our kayak constructor, and he has just a little packet of cards that we have at my desk, and somebody's interested in our kayak classes, and, okay, you have his card. Those are for him? Yeah, he's got enough there to last probably two or three years. Okay. Is it just out of the NWPRD? Yeah, he's in the...
And that's, that's one of those classes we make money on, too. I hate to say that. Pete runs, you pay four or five classes a year, easy, and does something in conjunction with the college, correct?
Yeah. Five classes a year, actually teaches our contractors with the colleges and things like that.
There. There. Steve?
Good.
Lori? Alan? Any more questions or comments on the vouchers?
Well, one other. He had a cake, he bought it Safeway for a Friday party or something. It seemed like kind of a pricey cake, but just curious about it. What was that party for?
Give me the cakes?
Yeah, I'll get to it here. These are just things I highlighted. I figured I might as well talk about them.
Keep looking.
Oh, here it is, 33.
33.
The Enwak cake?
Yeah, it says cake Enwak.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was a cake for, I can't see the thing on that.
It was on the 7th, it was a bit of Friday.
Right. And that was, you know, actually, I don't remember the occasion, but it was something Bill Patterson had arranged, so I went down to the cake.
It wasn't Cake Day, because those are Mondays. Trust me, my 10-year-old knows.
I was just trying to figure that out. It just seemed like it was a hot thing. I think...
Hey, Alan, you know why we have the cake?
Didn't we have a party for somebody that was, like, um...
Laura Wilson, when I made you the 7th?
It was Laura.
It was Laura Wilson.
Was it? That is a pretty spendy cake. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Alan. Any further questions?
That's it. Go for it.
All right. Now, for the questions, can we get a motion to approve the vouchers?
I'll make a motion to approve vouchers, 1,823 through 5,860, and the payroll account, 47,701 and 44 cents, and district vouchers, 5,861 through 5895, and the payroll, 51,3394.
All right, we have a motion to approve vouchers and payrolls. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Can I just get one thing shot about what Alan just said? She specified one person, that it was the, the people pulling out, it wasn't just one person.
Okay, thank you. That was with regards to the cake, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. Combined staff reports.
Okay. I do have some comments to make about the issue of all going into executive session for the review, but that I will save for the review portion. I also have some comments to make based on an email I got yesterday after I finished this report, questioning the validity of the $40,000 that I quoted that the Enwak cost the district before they did the law. I will explain those numbers during our discussion about the, about the Enwak dues. So those two pieces, I'll address later. The, just going through my reports, some highlights, actually, most of what's in here I want to touch on directly. So the Enwak checking account issue, that has been, stayed open, that has stayed open since last fall, when we realized that the way that it has been operating was not legal. And this is when the auditor got into doing an investigation of that account. I got advice from one of our investigators that you should leave that account open while the investigation is going on, because it's a lot easier to get in and take a look at it when it's, when it's open. And that to continue to pay only lead entry fees out of that account would be okay. So my intention now, and I need to run this by the deputy auditor down at the county, I actually spoke with the audit investigative team today, and they, in essence, approved this process. I want to speak with the deputy auditor, who was actually my first contact when this investigation started down at the county. I also want to speak with district council to make sure that this plan is valid. But what I want to do is submit vouchers through our regular process to validate each of those lead entries all the way back to November, when I got signature authority on this checking account. So that would be step one. And that's going to total to, I don't have the number in my head, but that totals to about $10,000. So we'll take about $10,000, and that will be written, those vouchers, those checks will be written to Enwak, then it will go back into this Enwak checking account. So it will be back essentially to the balance that it was at back in November. Now, if you remember, resolution 1302 allows us to have what we're going to call a petty cash checking account, with a maximum of $10,000 in it. So I'll take $10,000 out of that Enwak account, transfer it into this petty cash checking account. And the balance of that will go into the district M&amp;O maintenance operations account that the county treasurer manages. And once all that is done, I will close the Enwak checking account because I have a zero balance. And as a side note, sitting out there untouched for the whole time I've been here as the director, is the QuikBooks running club bank account. It's got $73 in it, it's had $73 in it for over a year. That one we'll get closed, too, and $73 will also get transmitted to our Enwak account. So that is the process that I tend to follow, that I wanted to make sure the commission was aware of it, public was aware of it, and see what sort of questions there are about that.
Obviously, I think it's interesting that you're bringing the running club account up at this time. I know there was a public record request for that information, but it's been open since for, you know, as long as any Enwak account's been open. And that also had Katie wrote for signature authority up until fairly recently, is that correct? So, I mean, yeah, it's 70 bucks, but it's still another illegal account that's sitting out there that the board knew nothing of. Is that correct?
I don't know whether the board knew or not. I don't think they did.
I can interject here. We set up that running club, and it was when I was here in my last term. And yes, we did know about it, and we knew the money was going through, and we had the accounting on it, it was based on a number of people that were in the running club versus a flat fee thing, and we could check it out. The numbers came through by name all the time, and yes, we were quite aware of it. You know, I bet all of this stuff happened with accounts, and I had no idea what went on. But that was when I was here last time. Yes, and the commission was aware.
No, I'm sure they were at that time. I'm just surprised it's taken so long to get closed. Katie's been gone longer than me. And now, you're going to take the money from Enwak, and you're going to put it into a petty cash account? You're going to take that $10,000, put it into a petty, now is this then money that's available to the rest of the district as well? Is that your petty cash account now?
That would be the account that was established by resolution 1203.
Right, that's a district account, it's not. And that's Enwak's money that's in there.
What do you mean by Enwak's money?
Well, isn't it the fundraising money and original dues and fees and anything else that's put into there?
That's the great question. We're not able to find any documentation of where that fundraising money came from, or how much there was, or any...
My understanding, you're going to take that money and designate it to an Enwak account for lack of a better word.
I have a liability account set up in QuickBooks right now for whatever the $16,000 or the initial amount that we found in that account when I got signature authority. And I'm certainly happy to show you the reports out of QuickBooks on that, but that $16,000 is sitting there until we can figure out what it is. And if the auditor says they can't figure out what it is, then I suppose the commission needs to tell me what that, where that...
Okay, so you're waiting for that direction from us?
Certainly, there's accounting for that $16,000. I don't remember what I titled it. It was in a previous report I had a few months ago, that, you know, we'll call it Enwak liability account, or suspense account, I believe I used. So that money, we have, you know, we have to account for it somehow in the district's QuickBooks program, because we're no longer keeping a separate set of books for anyone. So it has to be accounted for somehow. So there's $16,000 sitting there, and when the auditor says, we don't know where it came from, then I bring that report to the commission. I say, hey, how do you want to go count this? If you want to designate it for Enwak expenses, to say so is great.
Right. It was probably mostly their money. I would assume that they fundraised for, or...
I would have to guess.
Whatever else...
That's probably true, yeah.
So it should be used for expenses for the swim team members and things like that, I think.
Well, or it could be dues money that came in and had not yet been transferred over to the district. So in either case, it's justified to say, you know, we should put it toward Enwak expenses. To try and erase that is not my intention. That's why I wanted to hold it off in a liability account as a suspense until we set it on that.
So we're going to wait for the state auditor's report?
Mm-hmm.
And then we're also going to run anything we can do with any of that money through Nathan and town.
Oh, this, this process?
Yes.
Yes.
Before you bring it to us?
Well, before I start taking these steps, outline these steps for, for going through and eliminating that account, closing it, transferring the money, all those steps go by Nathan, and they go by Ann, the auditor's office. She was the one that initially explained to me last October that, you know, here's the RCW that says this account is not being managed properly.
Management, no, she said it was an illegal account, it shouldn't have been there.
Well, you can have an account, but you can't account for it the way we were doing it.
Right, yeah. It couldn't have been under Enwak as a separate entity unless it was a nonprofit.
If every, if every one of those checks that had been written out of that account had been backed up with a voucher, then, and, you know, a $35 reimbursement to a pool patron that had an expense for the team got directly from the county through a voucher process, stuck right back in that account, then that would be legal. But not every one of those checks had that process going on. There was, there was virtually no counting back...
And then it'll come out in the report we get back from the state auditor.
That's when we get it back.
Okay.
Do you have any idea when it'll be out?
You want to answer that?
Yeah, I will. We expect the report to be out no more than three more weeks. And that's the final report, not a draft.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Maybe what I'm looking for here, too, is if there's a consensus on the commission that any stuff should be different, should be changed anyway.
I guess my question is, why would Nathan, how much money are we paying Nathan to look at things like this if they know that the process is proper? Aren't we wasting money on illegal fees or illegal hours if they're after?
I would say in light of the view that we had two, not one, but two illegal accounts, as Kurt just said, Wirick and Enwak, it doesn't hurt to be over cautious with the taxpayers' money. Because even though they may have been raised by fundraising by a district program, even that fundraising money, because it's a district-funded program, is the taxpayers' money, and it has to have oversight.
It's taxpayers' money unless it's based on fees.
Right, but we start to provide oversight as far as where it comes in, where it goes out.
But once we have the procedures in place, why would we go to a lawyer and have a lawyer check to make sure?
We don't have the procedures in place, you know, in the past.
In fact, you're going to take the checks and go check them all with Nathan. And just right now, when you're talking about that.
I think Sean was suggesting that this process right here, these four steps that I have linked right here, that that should get run by Nathan. It'll take Nathan 15 minutes.
No, that's fine. To do the process is great, to do all the checks is what I heard.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. I want him to check the process, to make sure the process is legally what it should be. Because I have it legally what I should be, so.
Okay. Go on. Other questions about that?
Well, I'm not sure what you're doing there. My understanding from Ann was that we're supposed to take the money, move it into NWPRDs, some kind of an account, so that you could just have the money shown there as an asset for Enwak, and a liability on the other side, wherever you want to call it. But I don't understand why the account was left open. Anna, who is this? Are you going to give me the name of this person so I can confirm with this investigating auditor?
Sure. Talk to him today. His name is?
I'd really like to know exactly.
Yeah, sure. I'll tell you in a second. Hold on.
He forgets people.
He does. Thank you very much. I just told you, it was Zach Wilson. Thank you.
So he did tell you to leave the account, and so did you?
He suggested. He didn't tell, he suggested. So that way, they could gain access to do their investigation.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And that was with Sarah Walker also. Phone number? No. Okay.
Okay, anything else on that account? The district credit card issue, I have an application in the QuikBooks bank with instructions to them to hold off until they get approval from the commission, but people were all sitting there ready to go, to add a credit card for our aquatics director, Eric Miller, to add a credit card for our head coach, Bill Patterson, so they can, they can deal with expenses they have through their programs. And the issue that you brought up, Kurt, about the over-limited fees, those fees ended up happening because from the... Those fees end up happening because from the time that we get a bill from the credit card company, let's say we get the bill on a Friday, that voucher request doesn't go until the next Thursday. We have to wait another week till we get the check. And it takes a few more days for the check to actually get to the credit card company and clear. And by that time, it's almost been two months since the beginning of the prior period. So, essentially, if Matt Morris, for instance, has a $1,500 credit line and he ends up with more than $1,500 in expenses between that seven week period, then he gets hit with an over limited fee. So, that's why I'm requesting a little bit, a little bit more balance.
Did you bring that stuff? Did you bring that stuff, you and I discussed the other day?
Oh, the credit card policy?
Yes, sir.
Well, I don't know if I did. I had some information on it. I did discuss with Pam about the credit card situation. She just, you know, the hair went up on the back of her neck with credit cards. I can see that they're, they're very convenient at times, but for most items, if you had a petty cash account, you could use that account as well. I just think credit cards are a way to rack up fees, get in trouble, a lot of people use them for what they shouldn't be using them for. Now, if you and maybe Bill Patterson had two cards at the very high end and somebody needed something, something... Usually you or Bill Patterson would be here and they could go and run and get whatever item was needed to repair something. I think that would be sufficient, but for several cards to be out there and then when you have people quit and you have to get new cards and, you know, it's just an extra liability. I don't think the district needs. Whereas if you had this petty cash account set up, which could be way beyond bank checking account, it could meet any basic needs. So, I'm not sure why you need the credit card.
Well, I think it's interesting that you mentioned Bill because the people that, that need the credit card, in other words, they order stuff online for the pool. Matt Morris is the guy that's all the, he's out of the park and has to get it right away. They're not gonna give his credit, you know, so he's gotta pay with a credit card.
He should run that through you, you know, right?
Well, I know that he's doing it.
I know, but...
So, you want him to use my credit card?
I want you to use your credit card for him.
It's not always, you know...
Why can't he get a voucher? I mean, if it's that big of an emergency...
Does you want Bill to go to Ace Hardware? If he needs a piece of plumbing?
Well, you can get things on account at Ace.
Yeah, not a good example, that, oh, get out of the counter there. If it's a local business, sure, we could take a check. You could take a check. But if you want me to always be there for Matt and have my credit card and Pam, whoever, have, you need using my credit card?
What I read from Ann and the information that Kirk and I discussed was, and correct me if I'm wrong, the concern from Ann was that we open ourselves up for more fraud, waste and abuse is what I'm looking for. The more credit cards you put out there, the more vulnerable the district is. And we've seen what's happened in the past when we make ourselves vulnerable. So, I think that maybe we need to relook at this and be less vulnerable and maybe find a better way of doing business.
I think you're right, that petty cash account will definitely help.
But I understand also that credit cards are very convenient in the state age and there are times when they are very nice to have.
Well, when Erica has to pay for lifeguard certifications or, you know, when Shelley, when Shelley buys stuff to sell for a Dallas Jimmy's Costco order almost every, for me to have to stand over either one of them, you know...
I think that's where you need the check, you should just write a check and then Costa takes checks.
Not online, they don't, she places the order online. So, it's, to me, you know, again, thanks from Endurus on this, is that if you have a number of small credit line credit cards, it actually reduces the chance for fraud. Because you have the ability to control what everybody's doing. You know, the practice when I got here was one credit card, credit Carlson's name on it, a $30,000 balance. If somebody needs it, here, you go, take it down to your store, we'll do that. No, we can't do that. So, I mean, at least where we are right now, we've improved over that. And, you know, if we have guidance from the auditor that says we should do it differently than what I'm saying right here, then, you know, I'd like to know what that is so that we can...
If you're buying cards for some of these things to break down, can you get them online or does it, you go through a local subline?
Generally, what Matt has to get, he gets online.
Yeah, because credit cards are an asset when you're trying to buy online.
Yeah, I mean, if I were to say there are two people here that need credit cards, it'd probably be Matt and Shelley. And you know, Bill, when he does his, his travel expenses, basically what it is, you know, he can use his personal credit card and we'll reimburse it for travel, that's not a problem.
Do we have a, do we have a travel voucher system set up for that?
Certainly.
Excellent. Itemized?
Itemized for, itemized for lodging, per gium for meals. That's the way we begin doing it, the bicycle...
How do we do miles?
56 and a half cents a mile.
Okay. That's awesome, right. So, can, can we table this and more further discussion on credit cards till next month? Or do we need to have action right now?
I don't mind with table. The issue that I brought up about the over limited fees, in those situations, when we run into that, it's not gonna go away by table. So, when they see another $25...
Okay.
However, that's it. You know, if we can start doing the Department of Revenue with a check out of that petty cash account, there's 1,700, $2,000 on my credit card that isn't gonna get hit once a month. So, that adds to ours.
There's a resolution out there to set up that account, right?
Yes.
$10,000, isn't that what we agreed to?
Yeah, so there'll be $10,000 in that account, which will be used for meat fees. Because meat fees, sure, it's supposed to, go take credit cards and they gotta have the check right now, they can't wait for a voucher.
Whatever comes out, it's a voucher to go back in, right?
Right, so we write the check, we write the voucher on the same day, we get the check from the county back and it goes back in that account, it's back to $10,000, that's it.
Reconciled every month.
Perfect.
That was a lot of information.
Was I talking too fast?
Well, no, well, for the hour of the evening and I'm, you know, our agenda, but the thing that gets me right now is we have a lot of fussing about you have to have a resolution of the commission before anything is done in the sense of policy. Now, we have all of this that we've talked about with the credit cards and so on. And don't we need a resolution of some type beyond 1203 if you're going to have the commission directing? Or is it just because we talked about it in the report that all of a sudden this is gonna happen?
There are two different things, here's 1203 applies to the checking account.
Okay.
But that was the previous topic.
How about all these credit cards, do we have a resolution on that?
I was asking for a motion and it sounds like I'm not gonna get it.
I have no idea.
To add Bill and Erica to the credit card list and we have raised the balance, raised the credit limit to $20,000.
But we have a resolution authorizing the first credit cards.
We, the first credit cards, we had a motion that passed, right?
Well, I was reporting what was in there. I mean, every month you get the vouchers and I don't, you, actually, I don't remember if there was a, specifically a motion to approve.
I wanna make a motion right now that we add these two new cards and increase their limit from $10,000 to $20,000.
Okay, I've got a motion to add, motion authorizing two new cards and increase limit from $10,000 to $20,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second discussion.
I'll second it.
Okay, second and discussion?
I think it's a very good business and it's very efficient and as long as it's being monitored and you're watching the expenses that occur.
Top of the comment?
No. No. None.
Well, I don't see the purpose of it. You know, I do think it's gonna open you up to further potential fraud, waste and abuse with these credit cards and giving them out to folks to, you know, take away some control from the director and the board. So, I think petty cash accounts is the way to go. Get a business checking account, have maybe a couple of cards with a higher limit for the people that need these cards the most. Because I do understand there is a lot of things online that, I mean, you cannot give it out to that type of credit cards.
We try to, we do try to avoid it, you know, when we can, obviously, you know. Matt called and I think 40 bucks, full payment for the shutdown. It's a $1,000 purchase of all this paint and he said, and I called these guys and they gave us a credit line, just right on the boat, which is great. In that case, we didn't have to, but...
Right, that's probably part of that.
And then, you know, it comes in, you put invoice, we do the voucher, just like we always do.
Yeah, most things are 30 days net, you know.
So, that, stuff like that is great, but, you know, when he has a, you know, valve break or something and he has to get it right away.
I mean, I don't know, how often does that happen?
Too often.
Too often?
Pretty much.
Thanks for coming, you're on vacation.
Yeah, I mean, if there's an emergency and I'm gone, you know...
Somebody asks.
Further discussion?
And you are the auditing officer, though, you can approve the voucher and get a check within a week. So, I just, I kind of continue to emphasize that because there are, you know, it's not necessarily a time limit and some of these credit cards, I don't know why they're taking so long to get paid, you know. If that's the case, now, the limit on them potentially could be a problem if you're going over that limit and not getting paid in time. That's something that somebody's really gotta monitor. I don't know if the answer is increasing the limit on a bunch of...
Well, $1,500 limit, I mean, that's...
Yeah, I'm sure that goes forward.
Yeah, when, you know, if Matt has to buy something or Shelley has, Shelley has a big Costco order and then, you know, the very next week, she's got another one, she's overruled it right now. So, that's, to me, that's where we need to go. I think it's still possible to monitor.
Okay, further discussion? We're gonna vote on it, all in favor?
All right.
All against? Any, any abstentions? One abstention. All right, motion passed. Website upgrade.
Okay, just following up on what we talked about at the April meeting, our website space, obviously. That's been brought up a number of times. I do not have the time or the expertise and nor does anybody here on staff to make the necessary changes, change the layout, change the way the site is presented. At the April meeting, I mentioned that I had spoken with a company called How It Works, they're automated course and they do a lot of really nice websites. They're fit to actually make these changes and make it so we could actually maintain the site from here. It's about $1,200. I spoke in the intervening time since then with Tony Boyer from Waypoint Business Solutions, who actually does all of our, they're our IT contractor. So, they do all of our IT work and included in that IT contract is a certain number of hours. And I should have pulled the contract and went to see how many it is, but we don't always use the allowed hours that, that we pay for. So, there's a base number of hours and then we pay about 80 bucks an hour over that. So, that's kind of the bonus in this, is he would charge his business for $1,140 to set up the site. And then any hours that he puts in maintaining it would go against that, that IT contract, those go allowed. So, in some cases, some months, there'll be cases where we get maintenance done on the site, potentially for free. His, his approach essentially is to make it more logical, make the site more logical, take out that stupid reading pane, make it compatible with mobile devices so that you can actually read it from your iPad, which, you know, I get on my iPad and, you know, I bet people make comments here in meetings that they get on their smartphone, can't read the website. So, those changes will all be made and he will put it into a format where it's also more user friendly on the admin site for myself or for anybody else here that we designate admin authority to on the site. So, I don't know if I need a motion, money's not in the budget, so wouldn't hurt to have a motion saying it was a little $100. His business for $1,140 is an increase a month, you think? On, on any month when we've already used up our allotted, I think it's four hours of IT time, if they have to come out fix computer or change their network, whatever, they, they track that time. And if they're, if they charge us, if they use less than four hours, they charge us 350 bucks. And if it's over four hours, they charge the $85 a dollar. So, we get, if they've only used two hours of IT time, then he puts in two hours of web maintenance time, we get that web maintenance time for free, right? But he's gonna put this site into a format on WordPress that, it's a WordPress site now, but you wouldn't recognize it, because it's really hard to deal with it. But he's gonna put it into a format on WordPress where they have the in person to figure it out a lot more easily right there.
I like the motion that we approved the website upgrade for contractor Waypoint Business Solutions.
Second.
Motion to improve the website.
Up to, up to $1,200 bucks.
Up, up to $1,200 bucks? And a second discussion?
You have this, you're gonna move some money or you're gonna amend the budget to, is there... I mean, I'm not familiar with this budget very well, so when you said...
The budget doesn't, I mean, it has, it has, it has line items. It doesn't actually have, you know, little pots of money for each item. For instance, we're way over on legal fees right now. $3,000 year to date in May, we're about $3,000 over budget on legal fees. The, the good news, if you look at the year to date budget versus actual, we're actually ahead of budget right now for first five months of the year, so that's, that's good news. But I, I feel like if that's $1,200 of this website now, we're gonna see enough increased traffic, we're gonna see enough people that actually use it instead of going, I can't sign up for smooch, where are we gonna sign us?
We're talking about him putting together that regional list or the local list, the community events, finding a way to get a lot of people of service to the community of using our usable website would be great.
This is gonna require a budget amendment, is that correct?
I think it just requires a motion. You know, it'll, we'll end up being, those $1,200 or $1,140 will be that, that amount over, I'd probably charge it to our IT cost. It'll be that amount over next month, there's, there's nothing in the budget for that.
I'm just not sure the legality of this all. That'd be my only concern, how, you know, what that entails to just make that amendment. I assume it's gonna have to be some type of, of a minimum of a motion to amend the budget.
Right, and that's why I brought it, I mean, it's, it's not in the budget, so... There was, there was nothing in the budget assumptions last fall, there was no line item, no discussion of, of website development fees. And, you know, as I mentioned in my review of myself, I take accountability for that because I had a guy that said he'd do it for free and that was really stupid of me to, you know, to go for that. But at this point, if you wanna not spend the money...
We have to wait until '14.
We end up sitting there looking at this ugly website and not getting the traffic that we could generate or something better.
Yeah, I don't think...
I mean, it's not good to spend money that you don't have in the budget, right? You know, I mean, that's pretty obvious, right?
Yeah.
But, you know, when you're ahead in other areas, getting a little bit extra in some areas in revenue and you're actually, you're actually behind in expenses, you know, there's some places where you're staying some...
You do have to be careful in these tax districts. I know the county can't just move money around very easily without having to go through the commissioners and them amending the budget so that it can be done. That's all I'm saying and I don't know enough about it to tell you how to do it at this point. So, maybe you wanted to lay it?
We have a motion, so we gotta vote on the motion. However, we could, we're discussing, we can amend the motion, we can further discussion, we can amend the motion if you want to say, go back and find out what we have to do to amend our budget or, you know, however you wanna amend it.
That'd be my only concern. I mean, again, the money, obviously, the, the website could be stand the improved, I would agree with you there. with you there.
I wish I had more time so I could really get, I don't know these numbers well, we said this about this yesterday, but there seems to be twenty-two thousand dollars available in the repair and maintenance budget. I don't, no, I don't know if that's accurate or not, but that's what I see quickly. If that's the case, if we amended the motion to say we'll take twelve hundred dollars out of the repair and maintenance line to upgrade the website, um, that would be appropriate. However, as long as we have resolution.
That being said, the, the budget assumptions for last fall included fifteen thousand dollars to do the roof, which leaks like crazy when it rains. And another thirteen, I believe, to replace the heat exchangers, which we haven't done yet, because we have to shut down the ventilation system for two days.
In that case, I guess we have to change.
Essentially, we're a little bit, we're a little bit behind on that.
In that case, we have to change what we can find about, and I can amend the budget to what it is. If we can find it, that's fine, but I just can't, um, I can't find it right away.
Well, I guess my contention, and pardon me because this is how I think and it may not fit in with the public sector way of doing business, legal way of doing business in this, in this sector, but my way of thinking is this is a great investment. We will get an awesome return on those twelve hundred dollars by the amount of traffic purchases and public relations that we're able to do. If it's not legal to do that, I'm not aware of it, but if you wanna table it for now, can we check on that between now and next month? If you do that, or if you wanna go ahead and go on the motion and.
You have the budget, though, you know the budget, sort of, at least there. So that, what you should be able to do, and what we always did, was we found an item that it fit with, and what we did was we put that into that item and then if we went over budget on the year, that's one thing, but we know where the money is and we can track it.
Totally.
It goes under IT work. Yeah, I know, but the IT thing.
If it goes over, but you know, is that what I heard you say?
If we can find a line item that's big enough that it's reasonable.
I just don't think you can know when you're gonna spend the money when you don't have it in that.
Right. I think what you're saying too, Kirk, is that you can't just, you can't just look at it as a big picture, that once the budget is approved, that each line item has to be held to.
Yeah, you can amend it, but I think it's gonna take, we need to look at it a little bit, and it's gonna take some time, I don't think we have the time right now.
Okay, all right, first thing we gotta do is we gotta vote on the motion, because it was. So, the motion is there to approve twelve hundred for the IT upgrade of the, for, by Waypoint. There was a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Two ayes, all against?
I'm an aye as well, but I'd like to run this slide.
Okay, we have.
Three ayes.
Three ayes, all against, no. Uh, three, then two, it passes. And Alan wants to know where we're gonna fit it into the budget. So if we can give that answer to him and the rest of the board as soon as possible, I'd appreciate it.
We could, computer maintenance is eighteen hundred bucks.
That's the IT, that's what he's talking about, yeah.
So we could put it under the computer maintenance line. It's five seven six twenty forty one.
Where's my glasses on?
Five seven six twenty forty one.
I see us already, twenty-two hundred dollars, excuse me, thirty-one hundred dollars over budget on that, on computer maintenance right now.
That's over budget. Okay, that's what I said.
First line is what we've actually spent, or it's first column, second column is budget.
Okay, I just thought this yesterday, so I haven't got a chance to really, I don't know whether.
All right.
Accounting is eighteen hundred dollars under budget, the next item on my report addresses that, and spend a thousand of that, so.
Well, if you wanna talk to the auditor about the changing the webpage on accounting, I don't really, insecure about conversation.
Well, I mean, if you're looking for, if you're looking for a line item that's under budget, where we can, Alan, let's do the twelve hundred out.
Well, you can actually legitimately spend the twelve hundred bucks, you know.
I think what Kirk is suggesting is that we shift it to another account, so in other words, we're gonna, that what Kirk, I think, is suggesting is that we would make a motion to say, okay, we're adjusting this budget to reduce one line item by this amount and add to a different line item.
I think that's, if you don't expect any more expenditures from that particular line item.
Do you want me to figure that out right now? I think Sean suggested as soon as possible.
Now, now, now would not be the time.
Okay. I'm gonna communicate.
We, we need to get through your report and on to the rest of the business, it is nine thirty-five, so.
I have signed a letter of agreement with Jones Accounting and our person, Janet Pullen, has been here for three hours of fairly expensive time already, going actually back through two thousand and twelve. There are a lot of QuickBooks issues just as far as where we were accounting for money that was coming in. Our expenses, as far as I could tell, are all accounted for, no problem, but the income, there are definitely some double book sales, which I've mentioned in meetings before. There are, there are numerous instances of deposits being made and documented, but showing in QuickBooks in the wrong account. And there are enough of these errors that I didn't feel comfortable trying to tackle as myself and Nicole right now is, has been spending any extra time she has on dealing with public records requests, so. And I, I felt that the expertise that we would get from a professional would be the right way to do it. As a matter of fact, she came down, she was here for three hours yesterday and balanced the first four months within a short amount of time, so, actually five months, which is well ends of May, twenty twelve, at this point, making sure that everything is, is nailed down. So I was just concerned that there were, there were things out there, the biggest concern to me is the fact that we may have, we may have double booked a certain number of sales, that we may have shown a, a daily sales receipt more than once, a couple of times, and we may have also, this one I know has happened, we just have to ferret it out where it all is and figure out what to do about it, but QuickBooks accounts for revenue, if you're gonna invoice somebody, for instance, when we invoice the college for a kayak class, when we send them that invoice, QuickBooks books that revenue, that's a sale. It goes into our P and L as a sale. And I think what was happening was when the college would pay us, that check would go to the front desk and be counted as a sale. So in other words, we count it twice. And that, we have to ferret that out, of course, now that we've reported all of our money to the Department of Revenue for twenty twelve and I did the state audit annual report for twenty twelve, because the state auditor's annual report department told me they don't take late reports and they don't accept revised reports, which was a bizarre thing for them to tell me, but they don't give extensions and they don't take provisions. So, um, that report that I sent into them is firm, solid, twenty twelve is closed. So when we go back and try to make these adjustments, I'm gonna need to get some advice from, probably from the county auditor, go down, go to the state auditor and find out the proper format for going in and crediting those sales that were overbooked and have to do it in twenty thirteen with a line item note that says, this is which did. So, you know, when we do that, back to January one, when we do it, we, we make that credit on the date that she makes the credit and we just suck it up for the month of July because all of a sudden there's two thousand dollars of revenue that has to get credited. I need to find a procedure on that, but at least she's finding all of these things and then we can date them and account for that once we know we're doing it right. So, it's a problem, it's gonna change our books a little bit.
Any kind of ballpark figure of what, how much that problem is?
Um, I'm guessing between ten and twenty thousand.
It's mostly sales, just double.
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't, I mean, there's, nobody did anything intentionally wrong, there was no feasance or anything, it was just, it was just a process. I think that whoever was running things at that time, just, they just not understood it, so, certainly no, no blame to the feds, you know. Okay, um, next item on the local sports team contract, this again was part of the budget assumption, thirty-five hundred dollar line item in, in this year's budget for that revenue. You know, I hear what's being said about this dollar amount and, you know, when we get, talking about N WAC, you know, there's, there's a lot of money that this district spends on N WAC, in this case, at least we're taking money in. And, you know, the, the idea that we're getting fifty high school athletes, some of whom obviously already swim on N WAC and the majority of them don't, that are, that are coming here to our pool, this community pool that the taxpayers own and are having a chance to engage themselves in competitive swimming, you know, to me is a great thing. And when we talk about whether it should be thirty-five hundred dollars or whether it should be fifteen thousand dollars, it's the same taxpayer. And the school district is essentially saying there's no other extra money in their budget for that. We put that money in our budget. So at this point, to me, I don't feel like it's right to go back to, to the district and say, hey, you know, we didn't approve it, so, you gotta apologize, that's my opinion. So, facts, facts are it's in the budget, the budget was approved last fall and it's contract, I do intend to sign it, but based on guidance I've been getting from the commission, you know, I brought it in front of you for discussion.
Do we need to make a motion on this?
No.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't, no, it wasn't last year's budget.
I think, you know what, I'm all about the high school swimming, you know, all that N WAC too. I know there's some, some people that have went back and forth with the whole high school, it's a contract, you agreed to it, we stick by it, that's how I see it.
Maybe next year we can make an increase, it'll be fine.
I, I think in the, I mean, it should be, when, when we're planning our budget, in this September, October, November timeframe, it'd be a great time to get Nikki Looper, you know, maybe she comes to a commission meeting, you know, the presentations, the commission, I'm sure she'd be glad to do that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, I think that you said that, that when Craig had done it before, it really was approved by the board, right? Um, this is, no, we're being pushed here. We had, in fact, negotiating meetings with the high school and did a lot of fact finding, find it to some desperate it was to try and draw up to about thirty-five hundred as being good, you know, good citizens. But, no, this is an artificially low number, I hear what you're saying and thought, and I hope we can remember that when we talk about other parts of the program, but, I think it was forty-five hundred the year before that and it was higher the year before that, if I remember correctly, but I'm vague on that.
Did it drop when the, when the, it was in danger of losing the swim program?
They were gonna lose the swim program and in fact, they had a really hard time with how they were going to fund coaches and so on, so that it became a part of a whole issue. And there was some bad luck for a while there about whether we were being jerked around and all, but.
I would correct you on one thing, it's about half, I would say, I mean, it's, I wouldn't say the majority of the kids are not in WAC, it's, it's probably about half. I looked at our, I looked at our census, there's twenty kids on N WAC active right now, they're between fourteen and eighteen years old. And we're talking about having fifty kids from the high school, some of whom cross over, not all twenty of those are, are gonna swim for the high school.
I think, I just think last year on the girls' team anyway, it seemed like about half, pretty rough.
That was what I found in the census, some team unified, so, could be wrong.
I do like what Alan said, though, in the future, when we do our next year's budget, I think it's important that we bring the athletic director, whoever it may be, over and we make that part of our process because we need to, you know, they need to hear our concerns and we need to hear theirs. And it's always better if you go forward together and put those on the table in front collectively than.
Well, and I think to her credit, you know, she's actually offered, as Neil Patterson explained last month, you know, she's actually offered some time in the weight room for this high school workout group, that, the program that we've added, so, that's, you know, offering some of their facilities, understanding, you know, the symbiotic relationship, we are certain same taxpayer, so, you know, yeah, that's, she's reached out to us, could be wrong.
I've heard conversations that seem to avoid the gifting question between public agencies, of doing a contract where you invented their, both of them just added, so that both sides are clear on what the money is.
That's a good question. Alan's, Alan's question and comment was, excuse me?
Yeah, here.
Oh, yeah, sure, I was gonna tell you what it was. Alan's question and comment was that, go ahead.
Okay, well, we, we've been worried about gifting for quite a while and public agencies can't give money to each other and this is such an artificially low number, the thirty-five hundred bucks for renting a pool, that it's wonderful to be able to use the weight room, but one might be able to see if the school is willing to rent the weight room to the, to N WAC for five hundred bucks and we could move the fees up to four thousand bucks for the pool, which would get it closer to something that's reasonable and gives the both sides some security that in fact, there's a contractual base for using it rather than just sort of like we're willing to give you, let you use it sometimes. And it wouldn't be gifting that.
You're talking about using the weight room at the high school.
I guess my comment is, is whenever you do that, between football and basketball and, that's my, my question.
Yeah, the offer, the offer is there, we don't know how they're gonna do it.
And a contract, okay, okay, so a contract would define that and as, I think that's what Alan's saying, is it would give us a more defined agreement between the two, layout times, hours, wins, and it would be non-gifting.
I'm gonna go straight back before.
Yeah.
This year's contract, the one that's?
No, next year.
Next, next year, but what we have to do is add a strategic dimension to the policy stuff here, we haven't got it. And if we had that starting a few months ago, then we could have led into this rather than having it come and we have this right now and we wanna do it, you know.
Well, I, I have a concern about the weight room thing as well, you know, I mean, it's, can't remember which two days of the week, the arrangement is they get done swimming here, they change their clothes, they go over there and they're with Colleen here, they're with the gold coach here and then they're with the silver coach over at the, at the weight room, which is great.
How do they get from A to B?
From the high school, yeah, high school kids, they can get from A to B. But, yeah, they, the, or they can run, you know. But the idea is that it may or may not be considered gifting, but of course, their mission puts their athletic programs first, so if they have to change and they need the weight room, then guess what?
Contract.
Unless they have a contract, so you're right, I think that's probably the right way to go, but this high school workout group with N WAC is sort of an experimental thing anyway, and we said we're gonna revisit in February, so maybe that's the time.
Put it on your agenda for February and we'll start the strategic.
It's better to, I think, probably have it on the agenda in September, October, when we start talking about the budget.
Get Nikki a little record while you talk, that's okay.
Right.
Will you comment on that?
No.
Next?
Yep.
Okay, good. I just wanted to mention real quick, we had a very cool thing happen here, there was a little group of kids from the other end of the island that came up here and they paid to use the pool, but all that got in the water was their little robot. And there were a bunch of high school kids, you know, a bunch of budding scientists and they went out and they won the underwater robot competition, the Pacific Northwest region, went to the world championships and got a lead in place. So, even though they had to pay to use the pool, they still considered us a sponsor, so they gave us a nice picture and a little thank you letter, so, it's pretty cool to see. And these are all, these are all kids in their, you know, fourteen to seventeen age group and it's really, it's really happened here, here in two years. The other item under good news there, on the twenty-second of June, deception pass challenge to benefiting the Deception Pass Park Foundation, and thanks to Curtis for still being sitting here, Curtis actually managed the entire. And thanks to Curtis for still being sitting here, Curtis actually managed the entire run portion of that triathlon on a volunteer basis, just stood up and said, yeah, I'll take care of this whole thing. I was lucky enough to go out there as a lifeguard, and three other of our lifeguards volunteered for this duty, went out and made sure the swim portion was safe, and three other of our staff were out there directing traffic on the course. I, I sent a letter out to staff saying, here's a great opportunity for you to serve your community, and I had some naysayers on the staff saying, you're not gonna get anybody in the pool, and all of a sudden, you know, these people signed up for it, so I thought it was fabulous, and it's a great, great thing that, it's great kudos to our crew here for how involved they are in the community. Next item on dues collection, we're down to a thousand dollars, down from tens of thousands of dollars on the account last fall. So I've been trying to give an update, this is just a summary of one line item, obviously, but I've been trying to give an update every month, and I think now that we're down to, thanks to Nicole's very hard work, being courteous and polite with people, and just calling them up and finding out what they're gonna be paying us, we've managed to get ourselves down to this level, and that thousand dollar, most of it's current, but it's metered fees. So at this point, unless there's an objection, I'm gonna cease putting that into the, into my report anymore. Unless there's something significant where N W A C outstanding dues are showing a lot of dollars in that thirty-one sixty and over timeframe, I'm seeing the point really including it, unless you want to. Thoughts on that?
I, I agree, I don't want, yeah.
Okay. Couple of points in mind, just wanna read this into the record like I always do. Oh, thank you, sir. Colleen Brannigan, Roxy Culver nominated Colleen, and both of these nominations, by the way, came in just within the last couple of weeks. We put Colleen in May and Nicole in June, we didn't have a June meeting, which is one that may person normally would have been announced. But nominated by Roxy Culver, Colleen has shown her many talents every day, hired as our gold swim coach, Colleen has become a much requested swim instructor, who also fills in as a lifeguard at busy times. Roxy's nomination congratulates Colleen for her patience with the public, and she never lets it affect the way she is with the kids, she's amazing with those kids, and works really hard with them. And Coach Bill Patterson enthusiastically supports Colleen's nomination. Nicole Wilson for June, since taking on the district AP and payroll position along with the N W A C team admin job in November, Nicole has excelled in everything she's done, her energy, flawless documentation, willingness to take on new challenges, reliability, innate sense of order and neatness, have earned her the respect of her colleagues, and her constant smiling attitude and positive energy have made her a joy for the whole crew of working here. She's a tremendous support to the entire crew and a valuable member of the senior staff. She has professionally and courteously worked for our N W A C families to bring these benefits along. So congratulations to both of those ladies, yes, sir.
Okay, I don't, I don't wanna go line item by line item through the rest of the director's report.
You need to go ahead.
So does, does anybody in the commission have any questions, anybody on the board have any questions for the director on the remaining part of the, remaining combined staff reports? Steve?
Laurie?
Kirk?
Actually, I haven't got a chance to look at.
Okay, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go to Steve, will you come back here? Steve, go ahead.
Along with Director Walker and the white coaching staff, Coach Patterson's research into bullying, in goal of being informed of the issue, and commended education on appropriate steps to face in the event of an incident, if something happened.
Well, nothing substantial. You know, you get, well, actually, if you're the victim, I guess that's not, you're right, so. When you have eighty or a hundred kids in these age groups, you're gonna get an incident element, and there've been a couple that Bill informed me about, and he's dealt with them swiftly, he's dealt with them positively, okay, and he's solved the problem. But this is an over, sort of overarching issue, it's, it's an issue for programs like this, and USA Swimming requires a new policy. USA Swimming had a webinar two weeks ago that Bill Patterson and I both attended online, and it was very interesting stuff, so we're looking at drafting a policy that, that's a little more specific. There was a line item in the code of conduct right now, both the swimmers and the parents, that, you know, don't participate in or tolerate gossip bullying and all these other things, but needs to be a little more specific. How do you define bullying? What is it, what do you do about it, who do you report it to, what do you expect from the district, those types of things, so. That'll be in, hopefully in the new code of conduct once we draft that up.
Two things, to go along with the bullying, I don't know if you guys have a thought, like, you know, looking at educating your staff on, you know, awareness and inclusion, just that's what we're not there. You know, because at some point in time, I think that you may, you know, the coaches, they've talked with us before, but you're setting up our kids in the community, and maybe they're autistic or, or whatever, you know. I mean, you have a physical disability, but they come in, and, and kids actually are more aware a lot of times than adults, you know, you know, because they're in classroom settings. Lot of inclusion in schools anymore, not to beat that drum, but, you know, I, I would really, and I, I think Coach Colleen may have actually been a special ed teacher at some point in time. And she would be a good person, I think, to, to maybe talk to your other coaches about, you know, because I know that, you know, it's just a little different life, but they, they share, share a lot of similarities, they just wanna be loved, and they wanna be encouraged, and I would just think that would be a good thing. Okay, last thing, Alan, anyway, for me, anyway, Lynette Struble, Amanda's mom, what she brought up, you know, that concerns me as well. But, but I've always wondered about this. You see pictures in the paper, you know, with the names attached to it sometimes, and, you know, pictures on websites, and there's always that funny feeling that, you know, I mean, if you've got a kid out there that is in a, maybe a mom and dad had a bad relationship, maybe mom has been abused by the dad, dad's threatened to, you know, steal the kid, you know, just newspaper article comes out, 'cause I went online before and just Googled my kid's names, pow! And all this N W A C stuff of my kid comes up, and it's just all there, right? And, and I, I wonder about that too, you know, because there is a privacy thing, and I don't know how it gets linked to our, the Team Unify website, it does. So stuff like the Team Unify ends up on Google, and all this stuff's out there.
And it's like, meet results and whatnot that you actually find, you know, it's. That's what I'm saying, yeah, I do, that's a couple things real quick, and then we can move on, but there's, there's, the thing that Lynette brought up is a big concern to me, and points out, again, that our district needs to have a specific policy on how we deal with other record requests, that's part of the law, that we have to have that policy, we don't have that policy. And I would like to, I was talking with Lynette during the interval there, and I, I would like to put in to that policy, when it's drafted and approved by the commission, that all records of youth activities are exempt from release, because that is, this man from the Attorney General's office that she quoted, that's his interpretation. And then, as opposed to what she was saying, that they would have to spend money to, with, to have these new records withheld, then the requester has to bring action and actually, you know, suck up the legal.
Let's make that new business.
That's, thank you, right, then, the other thing I wanted to mention, just real quick, on those lines, in my, Curtis and I are attending, and I think Shelley as well, a, a social media webinar next week, and that is one of the issues that's brought up, that no reports actually board that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions about the combined staff reports, Lori?
Can I mention something really quick? Really fast, Mr. Sherman. Very cool that I have this visitor from Australia here, working with seniors this past week.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Kirk?
No, I, were you gonna mention the, is Bill Patterson covering his own things, or are you just gonna say?
That's the combined staff.
Bill Patterson's at a, yeah, Bill's at a meet.
I did have a, maybe a little bit of a concern on travel costs, that seemed to be pretty high for he and Colleen traveling to Top finish last time. Previously, I, I know Neil was very frugal, to say the least, and he kept his expenses down, but I really don't see the need for two coaches to be at these, P and S, I don't know why he's, I'm really frustrated, he wants to take Colleen down to that too. There's thirteen kids going, last year we had over, I think, twice that, and again, Neil could handle it on his own, he would delegate a lot of the duties to the kids that were there. I think we wanna try to save expenses for N W A C, we need to cut back on some of these travel privileges that, you know, she can learn while she's here. And apparently, practice is cut for this time when these P and S kids are down there, for like three or four days, over that weekend, is that, I had my understanding.
I'm not sure, if he, if he sent that out, I, I did not read that.
Yeah, that's, I don't think that's.
I'm sorry, that's, I mean, you're leaving, there's a lot of kids still here.
Especially if you're only taking thirteen kids to P and S.
I mean, you're gonna, yeah, that's. Well, and I, I will discuss that with Bill, my, and you know, the other concern is.
Eleven is.
He'll take you back. Bill told me thirteen P and S, he's got eleven this weekend down at Tink, which he's not going to, he's, he has that group. My other concern is that she's an hourly employee, she's not.
Right, yeah, that's gonna.
So, you know, there's twenty-four hours worth of work at the top of the team, which is not, you know, work, yeah, we can't pretend to do it that way, so.
So we need to.
I mean, I'm basic, you know.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'll follow up on that, I'll follow up, I'll be this.
Alan?
Just to be fair, I'm in a gassed moment, you know, if you get more kids, I'll give you that, but Coach Katie also went to Top finish one year, and Neil was there as well, so. It's not as if this has happened.
Lynn, please, no more, thank you.
There may be more kids, but that is the truth.
Okay, thank you. Alan? Anything on the combined staff?
Yes, she was.
No, I'm nothing on the, no, I'm waiting for the rest.
Just to, she was free, thank you very much, young man, I was corrected, she was free, she has a parent, thank you very much, I do appreciate that.
All right, Alan, you have nothing more, I have nothing more on combined staff reports, moving on.
I would like to table the N W A C topic, even though it's unfinished business, because A, it's late, and B, I haven't had it to read, I think it's pages fifty and fifty-one, long enough to go through them, and it looks like a lot.
You have a motion to table the N W A C returning seniors, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion?
No discussion on the.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We're finished with the running club, we're now gonna move forward in the new business.
I'll make a motion that we table back until our next meeting at Sun Hock at night, it's a lengthy discussion, and I don't think we should be into it at Sun Hock at night.
My second.
I have a motion to table until next meeting.
The remaining items on the agenda until the next meeting.
I'll vote for a master review.
That's remaining, I don't think we should get into that at Sun Hock at night, it's a lengthy discussion that we need to be awake for.
I kind of would agree at this point.
So I have a table, I have a motion to table it, I have a second discussion. Kirk, you agree?
You can't, you can't discuss.
Oh, we can't discuss the table motion, thank you very much, we can't discuss the table motion, so, you have a motion to table, we have a second, all in favor? All against?
All right, I'm against.
Okay, I will vote aye, I don't have to do a tiebreaker, so it's four to one, that passes. So with that, the remainder of the business moved to table till next month. Our next meeting is August fifteenth, Thursday at seven PM, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion's adjourned.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Meeting's adjourned.